Armory and the municipal alternatives is progressing around time and on target. I'd like to come into the May work session for a complete review of that as we indicate. Union Square redevelopment that the mayor mentioned in his report, we're having a public hearing at the next scheduled planning board meeting, which is a week from Thursday, I believe it's the 26th. I do encourage the public to attend that meeting. It's actually quite exciting as to what's being proposed down mostly in the Union Square area for a complete redevelopment of that entire area. The opportunity zone that's now, the legislation is now in effect, is actually proposed by Cory Booker in response to President Trump's new tax plan. It encourages developers to invest in these opportunity zones. They can invest and lose their capital gains if they invest into these towns. If they stay over a 10-year period, their capital gains are forgiven. And that's just not for New Jersey. That opens up anyone to invest. So we think if we can get a redevelopment plan done as agreed to, we could get an R and B to get a look for developers. So I think this is really a turning point for the town where we can move forward. I encourage everyone, if they can, to attend that council, the planning board meeting on the 26th. And we will report you to the presentation on that occasion. Working now with Public Works, our MS4 permit.
We work a little bit, that's going to be.
It's a church.
No, it's here.
Yeah, I think it's here now. Yeah, it wasn't supposed to be at the church, I'm sorry. Our municipal stormwater permit, summary's due in the beginning of May, we'll be working with Public Works now. I will be reporting back as to what the changes are for 2018 for this permit. It's quite extensive, it's going to require an increase in manpower and maybe some other capabilities because that would have to be more accurate in amassing of this prior stormwater system, including the outfalls. Quite a bit of paperwork that has to be done, measured as possible for movements. And the state per EPA this time has really increased the priority of that. I'll give a report on that at a later time. That's all I have now.
Stan, thank you very much.
Thanks, Stan.
Now we will go ahead, and Joe, before you get up, I would like to, this is the public petitions, we're the time of public to speak. Mr. Rodriguez had been waiting patiently since he had gotten here. If you wouldn't mind, Council, just so you're aware, this is to put a moratorium before us this evening. Mr. Rodriguez was told to come here before Council.
Hello, we're in Dennis Street in West Public Works. The woman there told me I had to come here about the moratorium, I couldn't speak with the Public Works.
Correct.
Yeah, I didn't want to speak with them. So I had to come here for petition to get a gas line put in my home, but it's been like 40 years. And I want to get rid of the tire and want to put the boiler and stuff and I want to get gas. Oil's very expensive. I've spent a ton of money on the oil in my home.
So you need our, just our.
I need your brose mix. If you go to that, they have lots, I have one.
This is Dennis Street?
Dennis.
And the address was?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine?
We had that.
Thank you.
Is it the time moratorium or is it because we just taped it?
Uh, it was just recently.
About a year and a half ago, I'm not sure. But, you know, I can't predict when the water's going to blow, you know. I'm new one for winter coming up.
Sure.
I got all my old building for me and all these expensive repairs and that.
Council, I don't think there's a reason for that, yes?
No, I suppose it's clarifying because I, because if it was the one, because I know they would do the moratorium over the winter, that should be lifted in like another week though, they couldn't do anything for that.
Right. I don't know, it was called Sunday.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Make a motion.
Roll call them.
Councilman Lips?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman McBain?
Yes.
Council President Holbrooke.
Yes. Mr. Rodriguez, it's been approved. If you wouldn't mind, go ahead and give Vicki your contact information so she can call you.
Okay. It's still need a permit required.
Right. There is still a permit required, you're aware of it.
I got almost everything done except the cooler on me.
Okay.
I already got the signs, I got the.
Man came prepared, Stan.
The streets are, the streets are fine.
Was that resolution 2018-81 or is that?
That'd be 82.
That is 2018-82.
Eight-one is the, uh, this.
Okay, so 2018-82. Mr. Rodriguez, good luck, hope we save you some money.
Very much.
You're very welcome. Connie? State your name and address.
One forty-seven Main Street. I wasn't planning on calling this, I really don't like to call people out, but since January the meetings have been far more productive and a lot less chaotic.
Were you here when Councilman Davis and I argued?
Uh, yes. We're going to have the sick episodes in a while, but there is a particular resident that just, and every meeting speaks out whenever he feels like it, and it's very frustrating and disruptive and we can't hear what you guys are saying, and I hate to see things get out of control again. So if we all have to be heeded, I feel that he should have to be heeded as well.
If you come see me after the meeting, I will go ahead and address that.
Okay. And the other thing was, what I planned to say was, I wanted to show support for a statement that Councilman McBain made. I wasn't at that meeting, but I saw the video and his statement on Walters Park sign. When I saw the video, I actually couldn't believe that the other one was taken out. I actually got in my car and I drove there to see it for myself. And I'll be honest with you, I've got tears in my eyes and all up in my throat. We talk about preserving our history. I know Councilman McBain said, you know, who approved this and Mayor Ellis was here, he did not own it. I don't know who approved it to have that old sign ripped out.
The Walters Park sign? He did.
Replaced with sticks.
I thought he did, I followed those. I was on the impression he did.
Yeah, no, he didn't say anything because he was just, you know, just in his own stance. I was really upset. I was really upset to see those sticks. With that being said, my husband and I discussed this one night, and he said, there are so many projects, and you got this up when they were paying to refurbish that whistle, the IR whistle for New Year's?
Yes.
Why don't they give some of these jobs to the high school students? I'm sure the woodworking class could make signs. I mean, for them to make a sign or whatever it is, this puts them in, in, I mean, 10, 15, 20 years down the road, they can drive by and say, yeah, I made that sign in high school. Personally, I think a lot of these signs are segregating. They look too much like state park sticks. You can't even notice those compared to the one that was there. I don't know what happened to it, but I would like to see it come back. If it was worn, it could be refurbished, but I, it's, we're throwing away parts of our history and it's, I'm getting tired of staying at school.
We will pass that along to the mayor's office for you. Thank you. Hi.
Liz Torres, one of four South Main Street, Phillipsburg. I'm here on behalf of the community garden. I'm looking to see that that would be something that we could be a part of or help in, have in the community we want to. I know my family and I want to put our money towards the town, and we always go over to Easton all the time because that's where like there's a farmer's market and everything like that. So like also, we want to speak about Priya and the stuff that she does for the community as far as diversity soul kitchen. I know that my kids love to go there, we go there, and it's been very helpful. She's amazing at everything that she does for everybody in the community, myself, including our family.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, the youth stuff, like I just want to say, like, there's nothing to do for the kids, they don't park, they can't play, like, so that's pretty much it. And we want to see community garden, farmer's market and stuff like that, something that we're like, and other things, you know what I mean? Like, we want, we haven't been here too long, we've been here almost over a year now, and we, you know, this is our first time here, we want to contribute to the community and put money in, but there's, we don't, there's nothing really, so like, I don't know, just seeing more things for, you know, togetherness of community is really what.
Sure, you want to unify the environment.
Sure.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Hi.
Hi.
Janine, same, one of four, South Main. Same thing, talking about the youth and we have two nine-year-olds and there's, there's literally nothing to do over here. And we go over to Easton all the time, like she was saying, and we're, they, I, Easton, I've seen this amazing turnaround and the, their, their people are very much part of the community and I would like to see, I don't know, it seems like every time we say something about like you're trying to do stuff for the youth, it's like, eh, I'm a little bit important. I felt like this meeting was more about the sidewalk than anything else. I think it's really important that we focus on the kids that are coming up. They go to hang out at Applebee's, and that's really the only place that they have all the way across the highway over there. And I think if we give them something to do, that, then they will be building clearly from the ground up. And then hopefully this place, that everything's abandoned, there's nothing to do. You know, like she suggested, you know, let the kids do something at the school and make them be more part of the community. Priya's awesome, and I'm nervous, I'm not a good speaker, but.
You don't need to be nervous.
Well, I don't like to speak with you guys, but yeah, I want to become more involved and.
Well, thank you.
See where that goes.
Appreciate your involvement.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nabou Lashawn Montgomery, and I support my sister. I support her 100% with the community garden, and I want to do, I want to do all I can to help her out because she's a wonderful person, and I myself am a special Olympics athlete, and as she helps us out, I'm sorry, she helps us out with, she helps us out with everything, council, citizens, and madams. I'll always be 100% of, I'm sorry, I'll always be 100% as part of Priya and also the community garden. No, sorry.
You don't need to be sorry. Please.
I think the question is, uh.
Thank you.
Five twenty-five Fisher Avenue, Phillipsburg, New Jersey. I'm several quarters now, listening to the council about the children. I've ten grandchildren and five live here. They, they count on the youth center, keep them out of trouble. Basketball, my daughter, my granddaughter plays basketball and football as a grand design. Track and all that, they're part, they love the youth center. After school, we're at the water room, we can't take them out, they go there and they get involved. They love it. My daughter, I don't know what we would do if we don't have the youth center. Everything that we're trying to build in Phillipsburg, PA is grabbing. The Y is $75 to go over the bridge and put your child in the Y program. We don't have no services for the kids but the youth. I'm mentally ill and in hospital, we make garden, we do gardening. That's one of my coping skills. When we build a community garden or a farm, we're losing money, but we have to go outside our community. And if we build, we're out of this, why we can't have the job? They're going like Aldi's out of town, they got mad. Aldi can't even get a job there. It hides 55 people outside of Phillipsburg. I walked up to the lady, I said, well, what you building there for? You ain't giving us the job. Why don't you build it in our house, uh, Hammond's Slack or Washington? I go to the doctor, I go with your brother to your and DJ. I want to get money back to my community while I live there. So I switched to Family Guy, going to have one program for the mental ill, and that's Family Guy that took me three months. I go to work, I went to a job that I was qualified for, when I put down tickets to work, it knocked me out of the ballpark. It's a lot of young ladies, the men who've been in clinic, been in jail, but they go get each job. They're hiding, they're hiding, they're hiding, speech with my dad, but didn't they let them go because of that background? What kind of services are we going to put in place without the problem to get a ticket back to work or get an extra vendor program? We're losing a lot of good people because they have to stay on the system because they can't keep the job. They hide a lot of people that I know. After your background come back, they let them go. They got to go back to the public system, they can't get your job. Phillipsburg, when I went to Chelsea, I was working there, I'm like, the lady looked at me and said, we can't pay you for $10. Your very goodness, I remember, we can't get in there with the poorest county. Why do we have to be so poor? If we can build more services for us, that keeps us from going to Washington, Hackensett, Easton. I went over to Easton, she's talking about a garden, they have a garden in the circle. Every summer they're selling vegetables to us. Then every idea we come up with, they're grabbing, they're taking everything over that bridge. You go over there, they have all kinds of church, like they have a train ride. Phillipsburg has the first train ride, they're cocky, and we're losing a lot out of our community. Even if we build some kind of way, cut cash, high sum of Phillipsburg residents, give us a second chance to build up our own community. This is our home, and we keep letting them take everything outside of Phillipsburg, the money going to their town, and we're losing all the way around. My grandson plays football, my granddaughter, they play, they run track, they love it. That's all we got for the youth in the summer, and we need to help from, whether you give us $20,000 for our kids to go to youth, whatever it takes to keep them out of trouble. The town is not so bad. It's helping our children grow up so that they integrated with different culture, different nationality. They love the youth center, that's all they got. So even if we don't give a $20,000, they don't spend it off, let our kids have, they deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I let you go, Priya, I just want to let you know, everyone know that Council Vice President DiGiraro has just arrived all of a sudden, again, after we just did all that voting, Council Vice President.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. We're now doing public comment, and I believe Ms. Cooper is about, now, Ms. Cooper, we do have a five-minute time, just so you know. And I heard you talk, so please, feel free.
Okay. I haven't changed anything over yet, so it's still Amador. Okay, so Priya Amador, 92A Mercer Street. For starters, I just want to say thank you to everyone coming out, and especially those that came and support me. On top of everything else, my brother Sean. My brother, I have been his sole caretaker for years, we're only a year apart, and he has actually represented Phillipsburg all the way to the Special Olympics tryouts for, to represent the state of New Jersey. He medaled gold in individual and in team twice with the Ark of Warren County. And in the middle of me trying to take care of my son and community garden and my own home and everything else, I shuttled my brother every place he had to go to to be able to compete. So I almost was drawn to tears, but I really appreciate him, you know, and public speaking is a challenge for anybody, but definitely a challenge for him, but I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay. That's two of my five, so let's get down to business, okay? All right, so at this point, I'm deterred because I have personally have been working my tail off to try to make this children's community garden a reality, and I don't understand why it's not a no-brainer. And the reason why I'm upset about this is, A, since our last conversation when our mayor was here, I have not heard that one syllable, adjective, or adverb from him since, okay? I have not had a meeting, he will not return anything from me, and the only thing I have gotten is attacked on social media by his cheerleaders as far as my integrity, and have I had any type of pedophile background clearance, which I have a level three FBI security clearance with my pediatric and neonatal neurology degree. Just throw that out there. Number two, I don't understand why it's so hard to get a garden here. You're more concerned with sidewalks and things of that nature, I understand that, but I'm confused as to where this $20,000 is coming from. Is it coming from taxpayers? Is it coming from where? I don't know. Then you want to sit there and talk about what he does, bragging about a redevelopment plan. Why can't that redevelopment plan include a community grant or community garden that assists with individuals that are part of this community, trying to better the community? My argument also is, in less than a year and a half, we have three recovery houses on South Main, not one thing for the kids, okay? Let's try to attack the issue before we get to the recovery house. Don't get me wrong, we all go through things, and we last part of recovery, if you try to get yourself together, God bless you. But let's work on this before we get to that part. Why don't we empower our children? Why don't we edify them? Why don't we build them up? Why don't we give them an opportunity to see that there's more out there than just, okay? Where you live is not who you are, we are more than that. On top of the fact that if you've gone on my page on diversity soul kitchen, and as a disclaimer, I'm not saying this to anyone's horn, especially not mine, but in the past couple of weeks before we had that little itty-bitty snap of heat, I have a van that was donated to me that is now shot because I have no tires and it needs a bunch of work. In the midst of that, I was able to rescue produce. That produce between my son, my brother, and I, in three weeks' time, we fed over 35 families in this community alone ourselves, separate from any food bank. We had no way to get it there. My son and I, with boxes, and I live on Mercer Street, walked all the way up to houses over by the Wawa to make sure that people in our community who definitely needed it, there was one lady, it was Easter, nobody came over, her grandkids didn't come over, found out that she had no food and she was sick. I went and took my little bit of food stamps, yeah, I got it, okay, and I bought her some medicine, some soup crackers, brought her a thing from our church, and actually sat with her, talked to her. And what made it even more ironic, while I had my son with me, this lady about a month ago was horrendously mean to me at one of the food banks that I volunteer at. She didn't know it was me. When my son and I came out, we brought this stuff, she came out the house and she looked at me, she started crying, and she said, you knew who I was and you still brought these things over. And I said to her, integrity of apologizing, which she did a month and a half later, means more to me than anything. And if I would teach my son how to have humility and accept people with all our flaws, and I'm his first teacher, then what is that teaching anyone else?
Mr. Sean.
So with that being said, where's our garden?
Well.
Where's the money? If you got money for sidewalks and signs and gutters and, and opening up the, the water fountain and flood basements, where's my money?
If I may. If I may. Just so you're aware, Stan does provide a very valuable service to the town of Phillipsburg, that is what we are very thankful for.
Absolutely.
That, I don't know that the community garden would fall under his purview. The, you're, if you're asking me where your garden is, I have to defer to the mayor because he is the, the real estate entity, right? I'm not, I'm not making excuses for the mayor, I'm not. He's not here tonight to defend himself.
I actually defer to, to Mr. Bates over there.
But, no, no, wait, no, no.
No, he's a sparker, is that's.
No, no, listen. I, I, again, Councilman Davis is, is a councilman who deserves the same amount of respect as we all.
Absolutely, absolutely.
What I would say, I did speak with you earlier, you did say that Father John had given you a spot?
Father John, who I go to St. Philip and James, and like I said, I've been pounding the pavement, I've asked Blessed Hope, any place that looks like it has a piece of garden, because at this point.
Sure.
I have pickle barrels on my awning porch, starting a garden outside of my brother's bedroom window.
I don't think you'll find an argument from this council with regard to supporting the community garden. I mean, I did tell you that today, you know me personally.
Absolutely.
There is no doubt that this council would support that. We obviously couldn't support that on a railroad bed that didn't belong to us, nor would I think that you would want to grow vegetables inside that bed. The very best that this council can do for you is reach out to the mayor. Now, I know it sounds like a broken record, but let me just, just so everyone's aware, again, I met with the mayor on Thursday afternoon, I took off of work to meet with the mayor because at one point in time, we have to say enough is enough, right? The mayor and I can fight every day, and where does that get you?
Nowhere.
Nowhere. So the mayor, the chief of police, attorney winner, we all sat down and we formulated a, a plan for the youth organizations, and actually, it was a very nice lunch. So he showed good faith, he had called me on a Saturday, told me of all the projects, and he has since kept me involved with all of his communication. So I have no reason to believe that he would do something other than what he had promised me. So what I would ask you is to allow me to contact him, give me two days, okay? He is, I know that he's busy because I did see his schedule, but give me two days to contact him, and then I will call you, okay? And hopefully I'll be able to set something up with the mayor as well.
And the thing as far as Father John, that I still have to write up a proposal.
Sure.
As to what I would like to have done because of insurance and things like that, but by the same token, we're talking about money that the mayor has talked about, about allocating, and still I feel like I'm Jewish and we passed over the whole conversation I've had.
Well, that's an interesting way to put it.
I like that.
I, I would say this, again, please allow me to speak with the mayor, okay? Again, because this was just Thursday that we did meet, and I can tell you that we have not exchanged hostile emails since then. Council, has anyone seen anything come through the chain? It's been pretty good, right? So honestly, the only thing bad about me was the Express Times today, so no offense, Mr. Novak. Let me talk to the mayor.
No problem, and just as a two-second sidebar, my question to you is, with the support of the council, let's say it's something separate that the mayor doesn't have his hand in, we hope he pokey it out, okay?
He has his hand in everything.
All right, let's, well, would he have a hand in if it was St. Philip and James donating a piece of their property?
None.
Okay, so how could the council assist me with getting this off the ground?
Uh, legally?
You could, you could as a council do a resolution of encouraging support, not like, for, 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 for.
A public declaration, something to that effect.
Where does the dollar sign go on a public?
So, well.
How much you want?
Because I'm already writing letters to Lowe's and, you know, Target and stuff like that, but I, I, my kids' dollars need money in this too.
No, I understand. Unfortunately, I don't know that we have those, the line items in that, in the budget for something like that. I don't know, I've only been here for 90 days, this is the first time somebody's asked me for money. So.
Mr. Meyer just said, how much do you need?
How much you want?
Take them up. I would like a community grant, at least because personally I'm already making shirts and event advertising, stuff like that. I want, we'll aim live, let's start at 20.
$20,000?
Yes, sir.
That's over my head.
Okay, what we have to do to keep you some point, you two can negotiate out in the hallway, but Mr. Moore said he's patiently waiting, so thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. I absolutely will. Mr. Morissette.
David Morissette, five Fairview Heights, Phillipsburg, New Jersey. Interestingly, I really never thought about handicap parking, and it's come up a lot this Now, I have a question, Councilman, or Council President Holbrooke, can I ask Vicki a quick question?
You, one second, we can.
If there is a handicap parking spot and it's not going to be used anymore, who has to notify the town that the handicap parking spot will not be used?
Well, what's happened in the past is if it's not going to be used anymore because that person doesn't need it, we don't get a letter typically back saying that they need it.
Okay. The, the lemon, this is kind of a catch-22 here because what we have on Washington Street is, we have a situation where the person who had the handicap parking spot moved and parking's tight down there, so I'm wondering if like the landlord could contact you and let you know that they don't need it anymore?
Oh, anybody could contact us.
Anybody can contact.
They can let us know, and then we'd have to see what we had on file.